Close to receive file the agenda. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Close to receive file the minutes of regular meetings July 26, 2018, or regular meeting in August 9, 2018. Any discussion of those minutes? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Periods reports commissioners. Well, great. I'll take all your time myself and all that, but actually, I have an honor and opportunity that I tell you. Anytime we are higher and swear in or getting new people in any part of the city, but certainly our public safety. Our time is particular branch of our city government and this case are firefighters and as I grew up, a fireman. Have the same respect level for either term. But these are the people keep us safe and very similar situation to our police officers when they get up every day and head out. Well, like us sometimes, but the nature of their jobs put them in jeopardy from time to time. And the people that take these oaths to become members of our public safety, whether it be police or fire in particular. They know and are mentored by people who have had close calls or had some injuries from time to time. But they're out front for us. Our city's one of the safest cities anywhere and I firmly believe that our police and fire are second to none. They're well-trained, they're professionals, they basically know what they're doing to keep us safe and keep our properties safe. So when we have an opportunity to make some major promotions, we'd like to highlight those also. So I would like to have our new battalion chief Chad Stevens, his family please come up. And he has his wife Jessica and three truck students. Independent schools, but I have a retiree superintendent, I have to obligated to report them as soon as the meeting over. Unless they get back to school, I may not do that. Sophie, Sophie's at middle school. She is still with Lillian, Sebastian and Lillian, she would pay your bills as well, she was with high school. Maddie, Bebe, and Dad, mine, and Chad Stevens. Well, I'm very proud today. We are too. As I went around the room, they're all very pleased with these promotions, am I right? Come on, guys, you gotta be a little focused. They're thinking, how long Chad will stay in that job. Proud of all you guys, chief, your leadership. I've been around a long time, I'm so proud of the leadership you're providing in our department. And Chad, if you would raise your hand and take this over. You solemnly swear battalion chief Chad Stevens to continue to serve the citizens of the city of Ashland in due capacity in compassionate manner with courage and integrity, to put others before you and to accept the sacrifices needed to serve our community. And you swear to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the city of Ashland, so help you God. I do. Thank you. I present to you our new battalion chief, family, thank you for providing him for us in our department, we're all very proud. And Steve Alley, our, close to being our newest deputy chief, would come up with his family. Amy, his wife Luke, son Jack, Eli. His mother, who I've known most of my life, Barbara, Jenny Walker, who I've also known most of my life, one of the star teachers Ashland schools ever had, I can tell you, I've observed her many times and you don't replace a Jenny Walker in a school system, glad you're here. And I'm sure Hat Dall is here too. Who also been my whole life, who a fireman's fireman. Some of you are maybe too young, but if you want the finest, the oldest, finest fireman you ever had.
Thank you, sir.
He'll be very proud. You raise your right hand. You deputy chief Steve Alley solemnly swear to continue to serve the citizens of the city of Ashland in due capacity, compassionate manner with courage and integrity, to put others before you and to accept the sacrifices needed to serve our community and to you swear to uphold the laws and constitutions of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the city of Ashland, so help you God. Congratulations, chief. I present you our newest deputy chief Steve Alley, we're all proud of, and I know you are too. Thank you guys for all being here too, thank you, family. I give you all, you guys a chance to leave if you wish. And go out and do what I promised everybody you do for us every day. Thank you, thank you God for coming out and showing support.
City manager? Yes, sir, thank you. Couple of things, first off, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for the support since we got the fire chief position. I think it's crucial to continue to save the city and really appreciate y'all's support on that. Next, I want to give kudos out, as everybody know, a couple of weekends ago, we had some really significant water breaks out on Highway 23. And I want to thank all the city departments, I'm not going to name anybody by name, everybody knows who's involved. I think practically every department was out there, the leadership you seen at the back table. And personally thank Chris Pullen for stepping up while I was on vacation, his leadership and created a great sense of teamwork for the city team and also the rest of the community. Also want to point out outside agencies that helped dramatically with that, Salvation Army, American League Cross, Southern Baptist Disaster Relief Organization, Bill Ashland and countless other individuals and also the leadership of the mayor and commissioners. We're checking out the site, so thank you, everybody, congratulations and kudos. The next topic I want to talk about very briefly, and I try to mention this every board meeting, is the How Can We Help? Again, if you don't know, this is the initiative for citizens to reach out directly, file complaint concerns that they have, take pictures, et cetera, put it on there, list themselves at the point of contact, this goes straight to the director that's responsible for it. It's a little bit slow starting off, but today we've had 257 How Can We Help incidents that citizens have turned in. In the last two months, it's more than tripled. So, for example, in June, we had 17 How Can We Help, we had 60 in July and 64 to date in August. And so that's a mixture, that's not just citizens coming in direct, for those who can't come in directly for whatever reason, some of the commissioners are feeding those into the system. So I think it's gaining some traction, as you, as always state, if there's any way that we can improve it, please let us know. Also per-
I'm going to interrupt you for two seconds. On our website, just as a matter of clarification, it is under the residence tab, it's the first thing under residence tab, How Can We Help? Because I had a little trouble finding it.
Well, we look at also the pop-up screen that comes up, it's in the upper left-hand corner, I think it has a red indicator on it also. Per previous discussions and previous board meeting and per the direction of the board, we have published minutes for the park board, VZA, code enforcement and planning commission on our website. You can find in the same location that you find the minutes of these meetings, the VOC meetings, and also in the same section where you find these tape sessions. And then the last thing before I turn it over to Mr. Long, Mr. Ted Long, is I've got kind of a sad announce, or a sad announcement to make, actually. Our public information officer Joanna King is going to be resigning her position effective on the 31st of August for personal reasons. And I want to publicly give her a huge shout-out. The dedication, professionalism, her demeanor, the enthusiasm Joanna that you brought to the job were magnificent. For those in the know, this was a newly created position by this board, they saw the value in this position and you really helped define what that position is both now and into the future. I think it goes without saying, I think everybody understands the impact she's had on social media, establishing our official social media presence, presence, Facebook, Instagram, and also Twitter. Did a lot of work on our, on the city webpage, it needed a lot of work and that's been done, it's continuing to improve especially with recommendations that we get from the citizens. She also was a key part, she's done a lot of data analysis on the How Can We Help and helped improve that process. And also crunching numbers on the recycled statistics that we sent out on the survey and that's going to be coming up in the very near future. Also helped move the field down, fall down the field on the mission, vision, values, and not least of which is the phone system that we're going to be talking about, new business. Updating a phone system that's needed to be updated for quite a while, so Joanna, I want to publicly thank you, thank you for the time and the commitment that you made to the city.
Okay, I actually would like to just further your comments. Chris, again, thank you for your leadership over that crisis, I thought it was really excellent work by you and Michelle and a bunch of folks. You kept us informed and it's so important because we have a lot of people asking us information for information. I just really appreciate your leadership on that whole incident, thank you again.
Anyone else? I think we all agree, Chris during that crisis, Ryan, how you handled that was outstanding. We had a very dark situation, but you've made the best of it, we appreciate it. Okay, at this point in our meeting, it's public participation. I'm sorry, Ted Long. I told Ted not to take too long, what are you going to put him up here? Just hand that out. This presentation will be a tad short. And I promise it's not over an hour. Ted is our major contact with the Kentucky League of Cities and he does outstanding job for the league throughout the state. It's a pleasure to be with you, the commissioners, mayor, and everybody else. So we had a work session a few weeks ago to work on the city's vision, mission, and value statements in preparation for things coming down the pipe in terms of future planning. So we had a great meeting, I think we allocated about four hours toward, it took about an hour and a half and it was great. One of the best sessions that I've worked with on something like this. So today, after all the discussion that we had and back and forth and we've arrived at hopefully a final version that you're pleased with. What I like about this, this is not KLC's vision, it's not our vision, my vision, but this is created by you. And hopefully it's something that you can live by in the coming years. So I'll just briefly go through them for those that didn't attend or haven't had an opportunity to see the statements. The vision statement for Ashland is high standards, pride, integrity, and opportunity, and Ashland's the place you want to be. The mission statement, our mission is to provide citizens a safe, progressive environment and to deliver efficient, effective, and responsive services while creating the opportunity for all to achieve enhanced quality of life. And then the values, we took the key words that you provided us and the suggestions that you made and crafted some statements that highlight those words. We strive to do the right thing, do our best on behalf of our citizens through teamwork. We believe in providing consistent quality service, customer service in a timely and efficient manner. We believe in respect for one another and all our citizens, our resources, and our community. We seek to be open and transparent in all actions to uphold the mission of Ashland. We're committed to high standards of leadership and service built upon honesty, integrity, equality, and fairness to all citizens. We believe in responsible stewardship of tax dollars by allocating our resources efficiently and effectively for the best quality of life possible for the citizens of Ashland. And we strive to provide customer service to all of our citizens in a caring and compassionate manner. Some members of the commission, this is the version that we're presenting for your consideration and hope that you'll adopt that today. Any questions?
If I make one comment, mayor?
Sure.
I had a version control issue of this that I sent to the team. The only adjustment per our discussions was it is in the vision statement was proposed to come out. I didn't catch up on this version.
That's fine. I got it in mind. Any other questions?
Just a comment, well done.
Thank you.
And thank you for guiding us through this process, I think this commission is absolutely committed to making sure that we are on a path and this sets us on that path and puts it out there so that if we're not doing something that falls into these categories and our vision and mission and values, then it's something we need to push to the side and move on to something else, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all your work in this and I believe we adopted.
I may want to amend a little bit, just not on anything basis, but just something to think about. The vision, the one vision statement at the top, it's kind of just due to my school teaching days and all.
Sure.
I would make, because that vision statement, the vision statement itself, I put it in bold print, I know we could do those things on our own, but I would just put Ashland, use the, all those in bold letters, high standards, pride, integrity, and opportunity. And whatever, you know, punctuation we do, the place you want to be.
Yes.
You know, just boldly. And not only do, you know, obviously we'll be on our website tall, but I've asked the city manager to, you know, do a really clean, neat-looking, attractive frame piece that we want to put in every department in the city. All the offices in the city building, fire station, street department, San Tech department, so all our employees, we're capping on them. They are the city and that, and once while they look up there and going through their office, going through their boss's office, where the case may be, and they see the high standards, integrity, pride in your job and provided for a customer, you know, and I think it'll radiate a little bit over time.
Sure.
That's what we hope for with this.
Exactly.
We want it to be a visual working document that people refer to and not something to link the philosophical position of the city. And I think it's what you helped us put together Ted, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I think the vision is really easy to remember and to execute.
That's important.
That's it.
It's important, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Motion, sir? Motion to, yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else like the peer report admission? You guys should give us your name and address and limit your time to five minutes or less.
Take a minute.
Okay.
Irvinga Howard Kaiser, advantage plus relity. I was supposed to come back today to be on the agenda for my sign, but I did not get everything done with the architect, my grandson was put in hospital. And he's out, he's okay, but I did not get everything done. So I was just showing up to let you know I will be here next meeting.
Well, we appreciate that and understand too, so we'll address it for you when it gets out.
Okay, and one more statement. If you could have those made for companies in Ashland, we could hang it up in our business when customers walk through the door as well.
Great thought, and we would like to do that.
Yeah, and we could purchase them for our own companies, just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Anyone else like the peer report admission? Thank you for being here. Old business out of May.
First reading on August 9th, Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, and pending zoning map, the official zoning ordinance to the city, number 101, series 86, as previously amended by changing the zoning classification of blocks 1, 2, and 3 of block 1 at 4900 Winchester Avenue, US 23, from R5 multi-single-family residential median density to B2 general business.
Submit. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Out of B.
First reading on August 9th, Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit to fiscal year 2018 grant application to the federal transit administration on behalf of the Ashland bus system for operating costs, preventative maintenance, transit service, and maintenance payroll and capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of this grant.
Second, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Out of C.
First reading August 9th, Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order 1 between the city and Shield Roofing and Construction LLC, a contract adopted by ordinance 99, series 18, regarding removal and replacement of the roof of the city's central garage buildings, increasing the contract amount by $2,870 with the Department of General Government.
Submit. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Out of D.
First reading August 9th, Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the annual section 8 management assessment program certification to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Proposal, those like sign. Out of E.
First reading on August 9th, Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, creating the position of receptionist, Department of Community and Economic Development, adopting the job description for the position and amending the authorized positions, listing of the policies and procedures to compensation plan, classification plan, as adopted by ordinance 51, series 17, as previously amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Any other old business consent agenda?
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting, board of city commissioners, August 23, 2018.
Second. Mr. Pullen, I meant to ask you this this morning, these tax credits that are becoming available, are those specifics right now? Yeah, earmarked to line for anybody in particular?
The Kentucky Housing Corporation tax credits?
Yes.
That is a request by a local businessman to write a letter of support for their development so they can apply for those tax credits. It's not actually going to be managed by us.
All right. Any other questions on the consent agenda? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. New business out of May.
Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting and enacting supplements S68, S69, and S70 to the code of ordinances of the city.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, for the public's consumption, what is this meaning?
This basically pays our bill to American Legal Publishing, which periodically updates our electronic and hard copy versions of the city ordinances. It's a recurring cost.
And what's that cost?
Approximately $8,000 to $10,000 per year.
And what it does, it puts the ordinances in the city code. We put the ordinances that have been adopted since the last supplement into the city code.
While we're on this discussion then, what is the city's focus on getting ordinances searchable on the city website so that we can enhance?
We have a link on there right now, that same pop-up menu where it shows How Can We Help, there's a link to city ordinance, or city ordinances.
Is it searchable by word?
It is.
Okay.
It's the friendliest on the planet.
Right.
But if you go to the other, if we didn't create it.
Right.
Folks that put our code together, it's their website that they have created for us, and if you go to other cities, it's very similar. But I think they could improve immensely.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Out of B.
Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and JR Realty, Inc., Don Hall, GM Supercenter, regarding encroachment for the placement of 10 streamer poles on each side of 18th Street between Greenaville Avenue and Front Street on the city's right way.
Submit. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Out of C.
Oregon City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to accept a proposal and execute contract between the city and Network Innovation Solutions to upgrade the telephone system in the amount of $249,936.76.
Second, any discussion?
I just have some questions. I read in the notes that this will allow call logs, queues, holds. Will this ensure that when somebody calls this building, they will get to talk to a human?
It doesn't ensure that one either can talk to a human, but it will resolve the problem right now that we have, that either it rings-
Or is busy.
With no answer or gets a visit.
Okay.
And so what this will do is it will put callers into a queue and the order that they've called in, I believe it will tell them what number they are in the queue. I'm not sure if it's got approximate wait time or not, we'll have approximate wait time. So much like you see with a lot of other businesses, that will all deal with, you'll have that.
Is this cost comparable to what other cities or governments pay?
It, I've done, the staff has done a comparison on what we pay right now. So this is an overall savings of $970 of the line to improve our system. And I looked at other city governments now, I've done- I don't know.
Okay, so we've had no consult to make sure it's a fair and equitable agreement compared with?
We had an open bid for this contract. We had a bid process, and we, the committee that served on this that compared bids and what they offered in both costs, this was a recommendation by the company.
Okay, so who was on the committee?
Joanna King, Michelle Beach, Susan Maddox, and who am I leaving off?
Tom Gibbons.
Tom Gibbons.
And Jeremy Spears.
And Jeremy Spears. Fire Department, he's on IT wizard. Is that fair, Susan?
Empty wizard.
Just since you get, I think you gave me the opportunity, Commissioner. Real quick to talk to numbers. We currently spend about ten thousand three hundred dollars a month, and we expect to remove five thousand three hundred of that, the current cost, as for unnecessary ethernet, DSL, and other hard lines. The cost of the additions, which is all new hardware across the city, so it's a unified system, everybody, you know, we're not dealing with different types of phone systems, that cost is forty-four, approximately forty-four hundred dollars a month, again, to the monthly savings of nine hundred twenty-one dollars to the city for a month. Think, and I'd ask the phone committee if there's anything functionally that I've left off, if you could please break that up. We have had problems with the phone system in the past, and our chief can talk to this. They had a, basically, a data card that went down. I don't think anybody on this board will believe that the phone system is not needing to be upgraded. What I'm mildly concerned, and I think part of it is kind of what I'm thinking, is we just want to make sure that we're, we've looked at everything, we want to make sure that the public knows we've looked at everything. Because I know that some, I've had some people contact me saying this seems, they work in business, and this seems high, but again, if we're, if it's comparable to other cities and counties, then we need to make sure we address those concerns as a board. And I think honestly, it's hard with a phone system to show the bells and whistles of ten or fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment. So for us, it's just, we want to make sure we're getting the right thing, we want to make sure the public.
Absolutely, and as does the staff.
Absolutely.
And probably put together ten, it wasn't a one-person effort. If you know the people that I just mentioned on the staff, their background.
Trust all of them very much.
And I think also important as part of the conversation is, like I mentioned, we're already paying for something that doesn't scratch our edge.
Doesn't.
That's the big picture.
Joanna, you'd like to?
I would just say to the questions that you received, this is for every city location, not just this building. Multiple lines, close to a hundred and fifty-plus line phone numbers. I would just let them know that it is a very large undertaking, it is not just a single building worth of price. We did not pick the most expensive, and we did not pick the least expensive.
Right, and could you share with the public what those costs look like?
We had it range from very low amounts, under a hundred thousand for a hosted solution, which is a different type of system, up to over four hundred thousand for the same solution. So we looked at it very carefully to make sure that security was also something that they were addressing.
So we're getting a new system, and I assume the state of our, all of our places, and it's going to be for about a hundred thousand dollars less we're paying now. Is that right? So we're going to save about a hundred grand and still get the whole city under this umbrella?
And it includes data security as well, not just the phone system. So the internet will be more secure, the wifi will be more secure, more stable.
Well, I appreciate the committee.
Absolutely.
Working on this. Did well.
What do I think, Francis?
We'll see how it works then in the future, which is anybody's guess.
It will take, it will take a couple months to get the system implemented, as Joanna said, as a security phone system in the city in different locations. So then we'll basically have a switch over at the most convenient time.
Most likely weekend or late evening.
Is this, is this phone system capable of handling peak volume calling?
Yes.
Like when we have, I know our water department is inundated and with calls depending on when a bill's due or when they're all coming in.
It also provides reporting on your peak hours, how long your call volumes are last, down to the staff level. How long does this person spend as opposed to this person, you know, what?
So the taxpayer's been expected dramatically improved customer service experience with this system.
Absolutely.
And to that point, complaints that I've heard about the wait, not when they get on the phone with somebody, there's usually compliments to that, it's the frustration of getting to somebody.
The frustration of calling.
It's getting to somebody.
Getting to somebody, that's the number one complaint we get.
It's allowed the citizens to know that people are on the phones, it's not that they're ignoring the lines because they don't.
Right. Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'm out of D.
The mayor asks for your concurrence on the reappointment to the Code Enforcement Board on a three-year term. It will expire March one, two thousand twenty-one, Philip Richardson, twenty-nine thirty Hackworth Street.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close lines, I'm out of E.
Discussion item.
Okay. Major?
Per directive of the board, we put this on as a discussion item. This was brought up in previous meetings by Commissioner Hawkins, the recommendation to video, report, and post the following meetings. Board of Zoning Adjustment, Code Enforcement Planning Commission, and Park Board put together an information paper with a couple of different topics that looked at legal requirements, policy ordinance requirements, privacy releases, cost, and opinions of the current serving board members. So very briefly, legal requirements, there are no statutory or other legal requirements to tape store or retain such tapes of any city meetings per KRS. A KRS does require amendments to be taken and retained for the board of commissioners, BCA, code enforcement, and planning commission, the North River Park Board. And that's also defined by KRS. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we are now publishing the amendments on the website. So that's the, on the legal aspect. For policy or ordinance requirements, there's no statutory requirement to establish a policy or ordinance to take any meeting. I know that was a point of discussion previously. Legal is reviewing amendments to determine if an ordinance, resolution, or motion was adopted when decisions made to take these meetings. Right. Privacy, if we do move forward, if the board does move forward with this, notice should be provided to the public by the chairman of that meeting that they're being taped in or broadcast. They should appear at the podium discussing that and are made aware of their image and comments aren't being broadcast, taped and reported. And then a comment that this may affect a person's willingness to appear, may or may not. Cost, I've got a lot of analysis on cost, but the bottom line is, we approached it from both the personnel cost and the hardware cost. A rough estimate to set up, edit, upload the four proposed meetings for the year equates to about thirty-four hundred dollars, and a rough estimate for the hardware required equates to about twelve hundred dollars. So essentially fifty-six hundred dollars to implement this across the city. Current city, current serving board members' opinions, and this is a little bit dated, I'm not sure if this has changed or not, there's twenty-four citizens that volunteered for the four boards. There were fifteen that were against the taping of the meetings, seven are in support, two of those seven provided conditional support, one couldn't be reached and one was undecided. Since then, you all received a note from E.B. Jevon, chairman of the park board, expressing his concern about it, and the code enforcement board also moved on a resolution that they did not support the taping of the board. Very briefly, code enforcement, their reasoning was, they're currently complying with statutory requirements, as I mentioned a minute ago. Certain matters addressed by citizens before the board may be extremely personal and or financial in nature, which can be sensitive and embarrassing and placed on the internet for public viewing. Meetings are currently open to the public for those who wish to attend. And the third was a cost concern, which I've just told you what the cost would be for the city. If you'd like, I could summarize, Mr. Jevon is also. In summary, well, just to pick it up, we believe volunteers who are not elected or paid to serve out of a desire to provide public service, they should not be subjected to this type of surveillance. We fully understand the need for televising major public meetings of elected officials. We do not believe volunteer committees rise to that level. He makes a point that some people are very accustomed to speaking in public in that environment. However, he feels that some volunteers, and his board feels that some volunteers may be more hesitant. They also may fear litigation or public proposal, may increase the, decrease the willingness of people to serve who would have much to offer on the volunteer boards. He's concerned about politicizing the taping of the meetings, for example, individuals who are political ideologies, aspirations, seeking service on these committees or attend them in order to use them as a platform. So those were, those were two perspectives, and Mr., I asked Mr. Pullman, I believe, I don't have anything in print from the planning commission?
Planning commission supported with only one descending vote, and BCA was four-one against.
So I think that's everything I know about this at this point. Is there anything Chris or Sean from, because Chris and Sean have oversight, if you will, on these recommended boards?
We, we, we have some board members here. I think, if you all like to be recognized, give your thought on it.
He's our chairman, he has to speak first.
Professor Power, glad you're here.
Seven-two-seven-fourteenth Street. I'm the chair of the planning commission. In my sometime, my some thirty years of serving on the commission, I have noticed that participants, after receiving their letter, have remarked, we didn't know we had a planning commission. So transparency is to be needed in that, and I think the citizens of Ashland need to be informed of the decisions we're making on their behalf, and if they can see that, you know, and the court said that the other remark they made is, why are we meeting at two o'clock on a work day? But I tell them if they're interested in what's happening to your property, you will be there. Thank you.
I thank you.
Bernard O'Nan, twenty-seven-twenty, at the force, at the actual. I'm on the planning commission been about ten years. I echo what you just said, transparency, had no issue with whatsoever. I do have an issue with an email stream that I saw in regard to some information that was floating out between the different commissions, BCA, planning, and I believe code enforcement. The information that was in that email stream differed significantly from what information you just provided. So I'm not sure that all city officials were on the same page then. So I think that that may have, may have swayed people significantly.
I'm not sure what you're talking about, Mr. O'Nan. The information that I just read was available to the board, so if you'd like to.
Can you be specific?
I don't have the exact numbers, but the, there was one city official indicated it could be several thousands of dollars, about tenfold of what you just said, cost to do this.
Okay, well, did it matter on the decision on this, the numbers that I just shared with you? And they may, again, they're totally initial, the numbers that I just repeated were what has been shared with the board commissioner.
I could go back to my email if y'all would like to, but the figures that were provided by another city official were significantly higher than what you had quoted, as well significantly higher than what was in the agenda previously provided.
Which agenda?
Is in the agenda toward what you just said, those numbers.
I guess he's talking about the costs that are meeting to that, compared to costs. The cost you presented us today, I'm assuming you're saying versus?
Right. I've never seen a big cost on anything.
Those numbers were given to us when they first did the study, and it's been afforded to us, all of us, and those are the same numbers.
So you're saying that you, as a board member, receive different information than what was presented to this board?
Yeah, significantly different. So I'll be glad to provide the two.
Yeah, please do. Please do. Because again, I'm looking at the agenda, I don't, there was intentionally no number on here.
So you're saying a city official reached out to board members with information?
Right, they responded to the request, yes.
And who was that?
I'd rather not say.
Was he transparent?
Transparent, Mr. Pullman.
Okay.
And he was in regard to the BCA.
Okay.
But they, it's significantly different. And I don't recall.
So the request was not just to, to have the board vote, there was actually discussion?
Oh, yeah, there was discussion, yes, absolutely. I'll be glad if I was, you know, you'll see. Sir?
I was asked the question in front of a BCA member before we had a true direction on whether we can do it internally or externally. So what we did is we estimated off what the My Town TV proposal was, it was going to be broadcast by an outside party. That was the number we provided.
I'd like to see a copy of the email.
What was the number?
What was the number you provided to the board members?
I really can't remember, it's in the email.
Do you have your email in front of you on your phone?
I can find it for you.
And one point of clarification, if you didn't pick up on, what I reflected is that the original request was pertaining not live broadcasts. Now, this is evolved, so I don't want anybody to think that we have all the facts of what we thought they were right now, and so the snapshot times were right after the analysis. So this is evolved on what, what the request was, and I'll interpret what I think, the commissioner's intent was exploratory on this. Commissioner and I had talked to Adam E. and I'll say, what are you looking for? And he clarified he was not looking for live broadcasts like My Town TV does in this session. He's looking for something that could be recorded and then played later. So did I reflect that accurately?
Yes. Well, I don't think the price is an issue.
No.
I admit in my mind, if it's the right thing to do.
If price is not the issue, then I think we could probably move forward with this then, because the only other option is to just make a motion that we go ahead and do it.
Well, no, not my mind, just because I think the price, price is not significant. Obviously, it was, it was really high and prohibited. We've got a budget that we have to deal with. What I'm saying is, if it's the right thing to do, period, and we have, we've selected four, four groups, and they, under statute, city ordinance, I guess, they have agendas and minutes, and these, my concerns about all the people who prefer not, not to have a tape, and I was on the park board for over forty years, and never, I've never known an issue, now, has there been an issue here lately that somebody, I don't get on Facebook, but someone on Facebook saying, well, we don't know what's going on. I don't know about it. Each of these boards, and they all have a little more, they don't, they don't really have any more magnitude to me than the park board, because these volunteers, just like you all are, are advisory, you recommend, the transparency is when it gets to us. These boards are clearinghouses sort of, so to speak.
I have the email here.
Do you have, you're talking to an email question?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, can you present to us the numbers?
Well, I was right in the middle of a comment here, I'd kind of like to finish some bit.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. My position is, if you've got, I think Dr. Jevon gives some excellent points, and he certainly, as he says in his email, he isn't, he has no concern about getting up and speaking here or on live tape or whatever it takes to be, and that is an issue with some people, and there's some of these boards, it's sensitive, personal information, yes, so they want to come to the public meeting, they can hear all about it. But people call me and said, well, yeah, I can really see this working great. I, I get nervous up there and make the comment, next thing I know it's on Facebook, just that part that I probably made a fool out of myself, or that's not really what I meant to say, it's a card play. And people are worried about that. My position is to be as supportive I can to the people, but listen, they're just storming the Bastille to be on committees. You know, I run into people sometimes, and they'll say, you know, I'd like, I'd like to serve the city sometime. I'll write your name down, we've got a process now. I think we passed a motion at the last meeting to, minutes, if y'all help correct me if I get off on this, but to make sure all these committees have agenda that is put on our website, we probably need to put more, like in a paper, I know, or park board, we used to have, you know, wherever the date was, Wednesday at noon, the newspaper has a section where they put meetings for that day or that week or whatever. And, and we need to try to resurrect that, but everybody is supposed to have, is obligated now to have an agenda and minutes, and those will be put on the website. We get those minutes and agendas, and anything they're doing that's in the minutes, if they, their actions are recommendations or advising us of something, they cannot rule on it. The only thing I guess has more magnitude might be BCA, because when something reaches a certain point with the board of zoning, then your appeal process is through court. then your, your appeal process is through court. And I can't tell you all the ramifications of that. That's the only part. Everything else, planning and zoning, code enforcement, they recommend to this commission, here's your transparency. Let, let it be said by me that I'm not worried about transparency. Every time something comes up, we're not transparent enough. We're here, we're live, it's on video for eons. I've never watched it. I'm here. Why would I need to watch it? But a lot of friends watch it. It's there. And anybody who wants to question my transparency, come on, I'm here every day and come see me. But this commission here, this transparency, I've worked with before, and we try to ensure it. You can't be all things to all people all the time. And these boards are advisory boards, are volunteers, they're unpaid. They're willing to step up and come to jerry. A two o'clock meeting, a ten o'clock meeting, a seven o'clock meeting. That's up to you all, as far as I know. To say, when you get your committee together, you all decide, usually on your work schedules, based when you do it, and people. But you know, people have a real problem with, with your agenda or what's on there. I'm confident you can have a special meeting or. I've never heard anybody say, but you can't, you can't ever get there. No one will listen to you and so forth. I'm not going to let people get by on making statements that we're not transparent enough. I want to be specific. You tell me exactly what it is. And we've got a lot of people serving these boards, as, as was mentioned by Dr. Jevon. They, they don't want to get up front. You get to, to code enforcement, you got people who are poor, can't fix stuff, they come down, our code enforcement works with them. But they have to get up and talk about, they don't want to do that. They probably won't do that, state their case. I mean, there are some aspects of this big, wonderful word of transparency that other people don't see it that way. They see it as, as maybe an invasion of their own privacy. And you could say, well, you know, maybe people on the boards don't need to serve to get somebody else well. We cater to a whole lot of good people serving on our boards. I don't know how many of them would drop off. But they don't line up. Now, you may have a lineup of people, and it's one of those things where that's your first line, where citizens can come and talk to those people they choose. They'll have to, then come right here. Sometimes we say, well, have you been to the park board? Well, maybe, you know, if you go there and start there, then they'll help you frame what it is you're asking this commission to prove. And they're all volunteers, and they're all recommendations that we can take or don't take, because we're elected by the people. We're the ones responsible to make those decisions, not them. And I, and I respect the fact that some of them are totally against it. Never come up before, so I don't have a solution for it. But I'm saying it is a black and white. Commissioner, it is. Well, this is what it voted on today. I don't think it's that easy.
Well, I agree. And I, I wrote a couple notes down. The word transparency, especially in this political climate, has been used and abused. In other words, if you vote for the videotaping, you're transparent. If you don't vote for it, you're not transparent. Well, it's, it's not that simple. If you're being honest and forthright and upfront with people, and, and you're attempting to convey the facts to them, then I'm all for it. But if it's meant to oversee someone or critique someone's motives or actions, then I have serious reservations about it. Because it becomes very subjective at that point. After seeing the results of our polling of our, of our volunteer boards and reading Dr. Jevon's letter of explanation, I see the implementation of videotaping these as unnecessary and actually a hindrance rather than a help. And I, I want to read more of his letter, if you don't care. Uh, he goes on to say, "We believe volunteers who are not elected or paid serve out of, out of a desire to provide public service. They should not be subjected to this type of surveillance. We fully understand the need for televising major public meetings of elected officials, but we do not believe volunteers committees rise to that level. For me personally, I'm accustomed to public forums and speaking in that environment. I'm not intimidated by that. However, many volunteers are more hesitant in public situations and may feel inhibited to speak. They may fear litigation or public reprisal. The potential new policy may decrease the willingness of people to serve who would have much to offer these volunteer boards. Also, does televising volunteer committee meetings politicize them in any way? For example, many individuals with political ideologies and aspirations seek service on these committees or attend them regularly in order to use them as a televised public platform." And so, he goes on to say that it is not a desirable undertaking. But these four boards are all served by citizens, volunteers of sound judgment and good character. There's never been a question, to my knowledge, that hasn't been open and honest in everything that they've done. Let me remind the public that all these three boards are, first of all, advisory. With its, with the exception of BCA, all are in advisory capacity. This board has the final say and should be and are videotaped. Secondly, the posting of the agenda and the minutes has not been done in the past and is now being implemented. And I agree with Dr. Jevon that that should be sufficient enough. Number three, all our boards are within the guidelines of the KRS and have never been questioned as to their honesty and transparency before. Number four, I believe, in my opinion, and after hearing both sides of this, that videotaping of these advisory boards would actually hinder transparency. A lot of people feel uncomfortable with being videotaped and televised. For instance, with the people that are cited for code enforcement violations, come forward to state their case. A lot of times, it's embarrassing. They say it's an elderly person or someone who's lost their job or just doesn't have the resources to fix their property. It'd be like parading the poor kid in front of the class that has no lunch money. And that, that all the public would be able to see his dilemma. That's intrusive and just plain cruel. That's not transparent. It's intrusive and not what we're here for. We're here to help people and lift them up or give them a hand to be a servant to the public. And so, the key reasons to oppose this, number one, to, it would hinder transparency. Secondly, it would discourage public participation in two ways. It would discourage those who may want to serve. And secondly, those who would attend and want to be heard in a limited arena. Number three, it has the potential to be politicized on social media, and its board members could suffer reprisal for their decisions. Number four, the advisory boards versus the elected boards, the VOC has the final say. We follow the guidelines set forth by the KRS that have never been in violation in regards to communication with the public. So, in conclusion, what would the answer be to this? This is the case of a solution looking for a problem. It never has been an issue. Never has been a lack of transparency in those volunteer boards or in this board. I've never had a request on Facebook, and there's never been, all, all requests on Facebook are not good ideas. The posting of the agenda and the minutes is sufficient for me. And everyone posted for the minutes and the agenda. If anything has altered this resolution, it could be, and my only compromise would be, I serve on the Board of, Board of Health, Board, Board of Health, I have for the last ten years. They audiotape their meetings. This, this, it's by state statute. They're, they're required to keep the tapes for the secretary, and then she transcribes them. And it's very non-intrusive that way. And that's the only board that I serve on that has any kind of taping to it. All our meetings are taped for the Board of Health. That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Any else?
I have comments. Just listening to the discussion going forward here, I think I know how this is going to go. We passed our mission, our vision, and our values today. And our values have in them that we are committed to high standards of leadership and service built upon honesty, integrity, equality, and fairness. And one of the things that Mr. Good said to me, or said just now, seems like parading the poor kid in front of the class that doesn't know. I don't think that that is fair to all citizens. I don't think that that is equal to all citizens to put on display someone's plight. I'm vehemently opposed to broadcasting that particular board of ours. Not because I'm opposed to transparency, because that's how it'll get flipped around and I'll, I'll wait on that. I am opposed to not being fair to all of our citizens. These are citizens who are struggling. These are citizens who are having a problem, and we are saying we are going to broadcast that to everyone. And I realize that is an open meeting, that's a public meeting, and anybody who wants to be there can be there. But it's the people who have an interest in that and not just whoever wants to be nasty and ugly. And we know that happens. We've watched it. We've watched it for two years. I'm emotional about this because I know what that would do to people. I know how terrible that would be for someone who does not have the money to maintain their home and is coming in front of a board and says, I can't do this. For that to then be viral on the internet for everybody to see, instead of maybe just a neighbor who says that house is terrible and that's awful, and I want you to do something about it. Then it becomes politicized. Then it becomes out there for everyone to comment on. And again, that's going to be twisted into, I'm not transparent. I don't think that people should be, should have that information. We are absolutely, under our KRS statutes, transparent in posting the minutes and posting the agenda. Publishing someone's downfall is not equality and fairness to all. And I can't get behind that. I, I, like I said, it would, it'll be, she's against transparency, but that's not it. I can't understand how a videotape makes these things more transparent. It seems inefficient. We also said we're for efficiency. We also said that we are for stewardship of tax dollars. It may just be five thousand dollars, but those are tax dollars. It doesn't add any more transparency than where we already are. I actually have a proposal about this that may, I'm trying to think of a compromise. And it's one of the things that I've never really understood about how this government operates. I'd like to propose to this board and to the mayor that in lieu of videotaping these, that mayor, you put one of us responsible for attending each one of these meetings so that we may report back to this board at each of our meetings about what had happened in the BCA, in the planning, in the parks board. We are responsible for that. And maybe that rotates quarterly. I don't know what that looks like on paper. But we have a portion of this meeting that we are, that we give our report. So, if I, if I, you say you have to go to those park board meetings, I am there. And then we don't run into a situation where something comes back to this board to make a decision, because this is where the decision is made, that we don't know what happened in that park board meeting.
Well, that's a good, sexy suggestion, and I'm certainly not close to it. But, but, you know, I've been here many years, and you guys, some of you guys have been here a while. Did anybody come to you and said, hey, I don't know what they're doing with the park board meeting or code enforcement? Has anybody ever come to you and acted on what the heck is going on?
Yes.
You?
Yes, I've had citizens say they don't know what our boards do. And I think even our chairman of one of our boards has said they don't know what their government does. And I think we're.
Is it that they don't know what they do or they don't care what they do? And so, they haven't paid any attention to it? Because there's a difference.
I take the cynical view of the taxpayer as a person who's going to get on social media and antagonize people.
Really? Oh, wow.
My view of the taxpayer is one that really just wants their government to work for them. And this would, this honestly is just a value-added benefit to what we already do as an open meeting. That's all this was. I, I understand the frustration. I understand that, and I appreciate Cheryl's comments. But the truth is, part of the thing you, you did read in our newly adopted vision, mission, and values was, we seek to be open and transparent in all actions to uphold the mission of Ashland. And with that includes accessibility to these meetings. It's, you know, Chairman Powers said it's two o'clock in the afternoon and they have their board meeting. Well, we have our board meeting at noon. And this would actually remedy a lot of the complaints that people say they can't watch us in action. Not that we're all doing something nefarious. Our purpose is to actually show that this city cares, that our board members care, that our volunteer board members care, that they're doing good work, and that our city officials that support them as they make the difficult decisions in our community, see that in action. That's the whole purpose of this resolution. I actually prefer to be an ordinance, is so that the public can see the work. That's it, words in all. And that we are so scared that somebody's going to make a mistake. We make mistakes every day, folks. This is not news to us.
I'm all scared, and I'm all frightened.
Then I say that we go ahead and I make the motion that we.
Look at this board. There's eleven people here, okay? This, this is a highly publicized meeting.
The people are served, people are.
No, I mean, there's been more people here before.
Yes.
This has been packed up, but there's eleven people that were interested enough to come today. And it's been publicized. These board, these board members are publicized. They want to come, they can come. But it's not being not transparent.
No, no, no. You're, you're, it's.
It's not being not transparent.
It's elevating the level of transparency. Nobody's accusing anybody of not being transparent. This actually will answer those naysayers that say that we're not doing enough to be more transparent.
Well, I'd like to see the naysayer wind up. I'd like to see, but I, I don't accept that at all. And we just have to disagree. I just disagree with you. Respectfully. But Chairman Powers, it's up to your board what time y'all meet. Just, that's a, since you brought that up, we don't tell you what time to meet. You all decide.
I believe it's an ordinance. I think we have to meet.
It could be, all you have to do is say.
The ordinance is more than rights, and we just, we've always met too long.
Well, you know why, you know why Bernard says, oh, we've done that.
Its acceptance of implementation has always met its two C's.
Well, let's change it.
Well, you can, you can set it for six or seven, and then somebody's going to say, oh, no, I'd rather come to. I don't have, I don't want to come back after dinner or whatever. Everybody has that crap. All I'm saying is, we, we're not necessarily trying to be perfect. We want to try to be the best we can in an imperfect system. And unless there's some big tax vote, or we're going to sell alcohol out to the church, this is it. But, but I'm not trying to be Pollyanna about this, but I happen to believe that the majority of taxpayers and citizens trust us. They trust us. They elected us. And then they trust us to do the right thing down here. I, I just think sometimes that we try to do some things not wrong at all, Commissioner, I'm not saying it, which lends one to say, well, we need to be doing more. Do we? Or should we do more intense than what we're already doing? And I think by, by assuring the agendas, assuring the minutes, people aren't going to be treated. I've never had anybody say, oh, I went to the plan zoning and I'm treated unfairly. Couldn't state my case or this type of case. They didn't agree with me. I don't hear anybody complaining about that. There's enough out there for all of us that we get.
Well, that's why I think we can do this, because to your point, you have full faith and confidence in your board, so do I. And so does everybody on this board. So, there's really no conflict in, in the fact that we should be able to do this.
We only have the applicant to show up. That's the only people I meet. Our last meeting was ten minutes long.
Looking at your bylaws, you did set two P M. As the time that you change. I mean, that board changes. So, how many people do show up at your meeting, you say?
The applicants.
The applicants.
Depending upon the situation.
And where is, I mean.
We have a.
It's a big neighborhood problem.
We have a session to people to speak in favor of the applicant, and then we have people to speak against it. And then I close the meeting and ask for comments of the commission.
And I admire all of you for serving. And I appreciate you serving. And you, you take an action that's a recommendation to us. Here's where the rubber is rolled. This is where they come to get us to back off and, and change it.
The only, the only thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, is the comments have been made that the board decisions, these voluntary advisor boards, can come to us for an override, if you will.
Absolutely can do that.
But that's, that's not necessarily true. The Board of zoning adjustment is a semi-judicial board, and a lot of times.
BCA, I already preface that.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, so that, that means that the decision could have to go to circuit court.
Yeah, true.
And I think those, those matters are also recorded in court. So, you know, I, I, at this point, I don't know if anybody else would. So, you know, at this point, I don't know if anybody else would like to comment.
I think a lot of citizens would like to see the meetings taped. I think they can come to the meetings, they do work, and I think a lot of people would like to see that happen.
Well, I did want to make a motion to create an ordinance that says that this board, the Board of Commissioners, and the Zoning Adjustment Board, the Code Enforcement Board, the Planning Commission Board be videoed effective January 1, 2019.
I'll second the motion.
Just need two to do it, ordinance, Tony.
Two to get the motion.
I'll vote on whether or not we can make an ordinance.
To bring an ordinance up on the agenda.
Well, I mean, there's a motion for an ordinance, you vote on this motion right now.
I don't care why I'm not going to torch you on that, I don't care to vote for that. To get it on the agenda, I don't have a problem with that. Take that.
My only issue is, if this isn't, if we're against this by vote, and it sounds like we are, well, I'm not sure why we would spend the staff time creating an ordinance to come back to us with it. That's my only issue.
We can fail, I think, right? Just a second. It can fail, right? You have to vote on the vote.
I mean, if, if, if you vote to prepare an ordinance, and we prepare an ordinance, then you have to vote on the ordinance.
Okay, Clark, you want to call the, call free's vote by Commissioner Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Clark, no. Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Sting?
Yes.
Mayor Young?
No.
I don't know. Ordinance City of Action, Kentucky authorizing improvement, change order four between the city and Tribute Contracting and Construction LLC. Contract regarding 29th Street Storm Water Separation Project granting an extension to September 6, 2018 for completion of the project, including 11 days of liquidated damages. Department of Engineering and Utilities declaring an emergency to exist to allow two readings of the ordinance on the same day.
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's the amount of the liquidated damages?
It's $500 per day for 11 days.
And September 6th?
Thirty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred. Yeah, I think this is the first time the city's done liquid damages in a while, in quite a while. I'm not going to explain further than that, sir.
Well, let me say, I hope we do it more in the future. Is September 6th a question?
Before I, before we move forward, is Lexington Avenue the big hump right there by the eye clinic?
The Big Dip.
We've addressed that. An owner during the project had mentioned that their driveways had held water. This was a condition that occurred well before the project, so we modified one of the manholes that we put in to receive water. It's not a good situation, but Tribute did exactly what we asked, and we know full well that that can't stay that way. So when the project is done, we spoke to Mr. Hunter with the street department, we're going to raise that and put a curb inlet in. But it really wasn't a part of the project. We tried to remedy a drainage problem that was there before, since we were already working there, but it's not something that Tribute caused, and, you know, it's going to be a lot cheaper for us to just take care of it than trying to do a change order. But no, it will not be there.
What we tried to do, I think, is, the first time I went through there, I hurt my teeth really bad.
Yeah.
We tried to, we tried to do the best we could to satisfy the neighbors.
Yes.
And that doesn't work. It didn't work. But, you know, my question is, my engineer here, how do you remedy that dip by a basin there? I mean, something, something has got ended up being downhill.
We're going to put a curb inlet over against the curb, and then the manhole that is there now that has a great top on it that's depressed lower than the curb line, it will be brought up to a crown elevation. So when you go through there, you won't even feel a dip. The inlet will be over against the curb itself. So we realized after that was done, it feels like a roller coaster, and it's a good point, Mr. Perkins. We don't plan on leaving it like that.
You know, I want the minister to show my concern for having to go back and patch, move all those manholes and dig them out, which Tribute did, I guess, and anytime you do that, it's going to, it'll probably be the first place to pop out and freeze and thaw, freeze and thaw, just so we know that's probably going to happen. You know, we didn't end up with a very well, a very good slick asphalt road up and down both sides of that 29th. But we had to do something about the manholes. I don't know if that was in the engineering or construction or what, but just not a best situation.
Right, right. Frequently on a project like this, you will have after paving adjustment of structures to grade. Actually, in our regular paving contract, we will pave roads and adjust structures to grade after the fact, because adjusting them before is just not a real feasible solution. So you're right, it's not ideal, especially when you see a square patch there on a brand newly paved road, but it is better than the manhole being an inch or so off and feeling that hump.
And since we're talking about this, you know, we have paved some other areas and then there's some areas that the road's fine, but the manholes are right in either your left tire or your right tire. And if cars coming, you can't avoid them, okay? You know, we talked years ago, I was a commissioner, I think, about getting some kind of a cap that, surely to goodness, somebody has one, but, you know, I don't know what the depth is, utilities or public works, but something to go over that, you know, we, Mark, we know the manhole, we know where it's at, we can pop it out there, but it would at least take that severe bump out of the drive.
A lot of times, it's the manhole that's been actually degrading over years of car on it, but if you had particular ones, we have a big unit price contract with mountain antipuses to adjust these, so, or we can have our sewer department do it, that you just point them out to us. You pointed one out the other day, and we're going to get it on our list to adjust it.
There's one right there in the transitions, that it's in your right, it's on your right tire, and you can't, or you're going to hit the curb or you're going to get a car coming the other way. It's right there, so, and it's-
There are great rings where you can raise them, but lots of times it requires just taking the whole ring out and rebuilding it, you know?
Well, I'll just look them over and try to keep track of it. Anything else? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Motion to suspend rules, sorry. All favor?
Aye.
Final adoption. All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Thank you, guys. All of you want that done, please, I just can't deny another one.
Chief.
G, I'm sorry.
Resolution, City of Action, Kentucky authorizing payment number 12 dated July 27, 2018, amount of $198,701.09 to Tribute Contracting and Consulting Board completed on the 29th Street Storm Water Separation Project.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Those like sign. Any other new business?
I have just a request, and I apologize that it's quick and I've heard it down in front of you before this meeting. I'm helping Ashland motion as part of that board with the grant for the Levitt Foundation for a series of concerts between May and October of 2019. And part of that grant application is a letter of support from the city, and I'd like for this commission to say it's okay for you to write that letter of support.
It's a good idea.
Please, I'd like to make that motion.
Make the motion.
Salute.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we're in executive session to, only individual personnel, we discussed, but we will recess to executive session when we come back out. Not how long we'll be there, could be a while, but there'll be no actions taken when we come back, so you won't listen to that. I think.
Yeah, you might want to. I don't know whether to, your planning, your back end, technical.
At this point, you can't say it on your way, like, you know, corporations.
I don't think anything's going to happen when we come back, that won't be a problem. I promise you it won't be a big deal. We'll call Mr. Foot there immediately if it is, because he can read about the morning. So we stay in recess.